Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I'd like to call to order the Oswego City School District, July 1st, 2025 organizational meeting. Shawn Callen.
Here.
Julie Chutney.
Here.
Tom Chapa.
Here.
Kristin Norfleet.
Here.
Shawn Anmet.
Here.
Tim Rice.
Here.
Jennifer Salazzo. Please stand for the pledge. Do I have a first motion for the Board of Education to appoint myself, Diane Schrader, as temporary, as pro temp chairman?
I'll move.
Thanks, Kristin. Second?
Second.
Shawn Callen. Thank you. So now if I could have Tim Rice and Jennifer Salazzo meet me up at the podium, I will give you your oath of office. Just do Tim first because I put it in alphabetical. You can repeat after me or you can just raise your right hand and say I do. I think that's fine.
Where do you want me?
Are you fine?
Okay.
I can read and then you can just say I do when I'm done. Okay. I, Tim Rice, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability, the duties of the position of a Oswego City School District Board of Education member, to which I am now assigned.
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations. You can raise your right hand and say I do when I'm done. I, Jennifer Salazzo, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability, the duties of the position of a Oswego City School District Board of Education member, to which I am now assigned. I do. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. The floor is open for nominations for the President of the Oswego City School District Board of Education for the 25-26 school year. Nominees are... Do you need me to read them?
You call for nominations.
Okay. Okay. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Tom Chapa.
I second.
Any other nominations? Okay. Resolved that Tom Chapa be elected President of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Oswego, New York, beginning July 1st, 2025, and continuing until a successor is elected at the next annual meeting of the Board of Education. We will do a roll call vote. Shawn Callen.
Yes.
Julie Chutney. Tom Chapa.
Yes.
Kristin Norfleet.
Yes.
Shawn Anmet.
Yep.
Tim Rice.
Yes.
Jennifer Salazzo.
Yes.
All right, Tom. If you want to meet me up here. Mr. President. Okay. Raise your right hand. I, Tom Chapa, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability, the duties of the position of the Oswego City School District Board of Education President, to which I am now assigned.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The floor is now open for nominations for Vice President of the Oswego City School District Board of Education for the 25-26 school year. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Shawn Callen for Vice President.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Resolved that Shawn Callen be elected Vice President of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Oswego, New York, beginning July 1st, 2025, and continuing until a successor is elected at the next annual meeting of the Board of Education. Roll call vote. Shawn Callen.
Yes.
Julie Chutney.
Yes.
Tom Chapa.
Yes.
Kristin Norfleet.
Yes.
Shawn Anmet.
Yes.
Tim Rice.
Yes.
Jennifer Salazzo. Sorry, I stole your microphone. All right, Shawn, if you want to meet me up. If you'd raise your right hand and say I do when I am done. I, Shawn Callen, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability, the duties of the position of a Oswego City School District Board of Education Vice President, to which I am now assigned.
I do.
Congratulations. So now I turn it over to Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And welcome, Tim, and welcome, Jennifer. Appreciate having you guys on board. So I'm going to start. I thank you. I'm going to need a little help, kids. This is my first time sitting in this chair and going to navigate it the best I can. So I appreciate it. So recommended actions, number eight. We're going to take number eight A first, if I have a motion on that, which is Board of Education Committee Appointments. Got a motion for that?
Don't we need to know what the proposed appointments are?
Do we want to do it or go into discussion, or would we go directly to that? I can go right to the... I can go right to that. All right. Just so everybody knows, in the past, what we would do, and this is the first time trying this, Jim and I talked about it before we entered, before we... he left, was it would be basically who wants to sit on what committee, and it would be kind of a little of a free-for-all. But what we did this time is ranked everybody's positions so we could find out what their desire was, and the goal being a couple of points, to get everybody their first choice, to make sure that we were having everyone had two seats on committees, so everybody's carrying the load, and then also to make sure that, well, to make sure that everybody got a chance to be in positions where they may have been on a committee before. So knowing that this may arise, these are the appointments that I've come up with. So on community relations, Shawn Anmott is the current... was the current chair. Julie Chutney would be on that, and then I was on that board as well, or that committee, so I would stay there. For policy, it would be Julie Chutney and Kristin. Kristin was the Chair of the current Policy Committee, and I would step up onto that committee as well. For facilities, it would be Shawn Callen, who is the current Chair, Shawn Anmott, who's currently on that, and Tim Rice would be added to that. So in the Audit Committee, it would be Jen Salazzo and also Kristin Norfleet. We don't have a chair for that, so if we could come up with that, that would be great. And then also, that's the only committee that has two seats, so if there's somebody else that wanted to serve on that committee, it's available. And for visitation, we have Shawn Callen, Tim Rice, and Jen Salazzo. And I know that both Tim and Jen, that was not your number one pick. But I just want to offer that the Visitation Committee has been one of the most informative committees, I think, that we've had, we've enacted at the last couple of years. And what it does is gives you perspective of the whole district. Go to each school to see the transportation facility, and also to see the warehouse, and to go there to get a better idea of the district as a whole. And also, relative to Facilities Committee, it gives you, again, a larger perspective all the way around. So those are the choices I made.
So I make a motion to accept your committee assignments as just proposed.
Are we gonna... Should we establish... We don't have to establish chairs, open chair persons right now.
I don't think we have to do it right now. I think we can bring it back at the next meeting and discuss amongst yourselves when you get together.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. Now this is the part, isn't it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries, seven oh. So now, what I was going to do without objection is group items B through P, items B through P. And if I need to do a quick reading on them... No. Great. No quick reading. That spares us all that suffering. So B through P, if I can have a motion for B through P.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. So we're going to pull this one out, go to Q. Yeah. So we're going to pull this out for a separate vote. This is Attorney of Board of Education and School District, Attorney Appointment for the School Year 2025 and 2026. If I can have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. Kristin, thank you, Shawn. Okay. Discussion?
Yeah. As an attorney, I can tell you that education law is a specialty, and so it's important that we have a law firm that specializes in education law representing us. In the past, the district has used some other options, and there is no question that Farrar Fierenza is providing a more comprehensive service for us. When we have used other attorneys in the past, they've had to farm out a lot of work because they don't have the background and the knowledge, which ends up costing us more. So for that reason, I would strongly recommend that we continue with a law firm that specializes in education law. With regards to Bonn, Shenick, and King, basically the same thing. They specialize in bond work. No play on their name. And it's important that we have attorneys who... that's their specialty. And so I recommend that we continue with them as well.
Tim?
I don't disagree with what Kristin's saying concerning the education law. But I mean, I've spoken on this, obviously numerous times. You guys are sick of hearing me on it. Labor Law 8616B2 explicitly addresses any conflict between the apprentice requirement and New York State competitive bidding laws. The only problem I have with this lawyer is when it... whether it be a fund administrator or a board or fund counsel or a board counsel injects their personal opinion on something, because there's no question on the law, I think we're going down a slippery slope when that starts affecting our policy. And the board sets the policy. If our service providers don't want to support that and adjust to it, then we need to put out RFQs. That's it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah. I mean, just so we're clear, the role of the attorney is to provide us with legal opinions based upon their expertise. The thing with law, and I obviously speak with knowledge, is that all laws are subject to interpretation. And that's why there's court cases that continue every single day that go all the way up to the Supreme Court of the State of New York, because different lawyers interpret laws different ways. So I appreciate everything that you've said, and I don't... and I understand where you're coming from, but I just want to make clear that it's not their personal agenda or personal opinion. It was their analysis of the law that we asked them to give to us, and reasonable minds can disagree. And I think as evidence of that, the attorneys who are working for the unions read the laws differently. And that's what lawyers do. You analyze the law and you offer an opinion on what the law means based upon the cases that you review. So certainly, everyone needs to understand that any lawyer is going to provide their opinion based upon their knowledge, their training, and their expertise. And to think that it is based upon personal agenda, I think, is a misunderstanding. No one at Farrar Fierenza has a personal agenda in the Oswego City School District. You know, if there was someone from Oswego working there, then I might completely agree with you that I would be concerned about agenda. But when it comes to Farrar, unless something has changed with how they staff that law firm, there's nobody there with a personal investment in the Oswego City School District, so.
Thank you, Kristin. Any other discussion? Anything? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? All right. So carries six one. So now, item R, which is our student representative for board for this year, and our student representative is going to be... where is she? Right there. Leah Norton. Thank you very much. She's going to be our student representative. And I just have to say, we are incredibly fortunate in... let me get to it first procedurally. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Shawn. Discussion? All right. Now I will say it. That we are very fortunate to have the ex officio student representative, because most districts have not had one. And right now, you see it a lot of times. We're getting it in your email or getting it in your regular mail from NISP about promotions they're having to discuss student ex officios. So we're ahead of the... We may have to do a little tweaking with the governor's mandate lap, but we're very fortunate. And they brought us great insight into the district from the kids and from their perspective. So it's been great.
Tom?
Yes.
I know... Yeah, I think we're very fortunate. And Amanda and Michael, I think, the year before. Last year, I... that we discussed maybe giving some more guidance to our student representative so that they could be... feel prepared and contribute more versus being on their own. So I just want to bring that back up, that once we get going, maybe we can provide some of that. Not asking our student or not telling our student rep what to do, but like some of the substance and just trying to help so that they feel like they're contributing as much as they can when they come to our meetings.
Yeah, we actually discussed that in Policy Committee as part of having to rework our policy a little bit, because now it's a government mandate as opposed to Oswego being proactive, and that we were going to provide a little bit more framework for the student rep. I think that if you go back and ask, for instance, the one from last year, Amanda, she'll do that. She was basically told congratulations and good luck. And I think that moving forward, we're going to try to give them just a little bit more understanding of the whole process so that feel like they're an active member of the group instead of just sort of watching.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Floor to the public. We have anything for floor to the public? We do not, so I can spare you that three-minute dissertation. All right. Board of Education, items A and B under Board of Education. The 2025-26 Code of Conduct is available for review. The public hearing and adoption of the Code of Conduct occur at the August 5th, 2025 meeting. The same goes for our District Safety Plan, available for review online. And it'll be up for a hearing and adoption on the District-wide Safety Plan will occur on the August 5th meeting.
Just a reminder, if people have any questions or comments prior to that meeting, they can contact me directly or the clerk so that we can address any of those even prior to the meeting. But again, hearing on the 5th and approval on the 5th.
And Ray, can you tell me, is it easily accessible on the website? Is it prominent?
It's linked right within this document.
Right in the document here? Okay. Just for the folks at home, so they'll have easy access to it. Great. So now we're on committee discussions. I didn't check prior to, but I know that Julie may have something.
I do have something. The Visitation Committee had our final visit. It was at the Transportation Center. I personally had never been to the Transportation Center. I've been to every other building in the district, but not this one. And it was a little bit... There was a lot of really great things I didn't know about our district that we have there, but that building is very much showing its age. I wanted to let all the members know that Tom Gunn gave this beautiful packet presentation about everything in that building, and I emailed it to you. So the highlights were... The building itself was constructed in '84. The unique part about what we have here is that we have indoor parking for 56 full buses, which, to even wrap my head in that, but to see it, I was like, whoa, it's pretty big. It has a 14-bay indoor storage that kind of, obviously in our weather, you know, saves us so much time having our buses under those in the garage. And Tom actually stated it was one of the greatest assets of the center. We saw a fueling station that holds 9,000 gallons of tanks or 9,000 gallon storage tanks, two diesel, one unleaded, an eight-bay maintenance shop, and a bus wash... a bus wash system, which I guess is also unique, that our staff doesn't have to wash, hand wash our buses. They have like a, basically a car wash, but for buses. Pretty cool. Basically, for me, walking through there, the building was pretty beat on. The walls are eroding away, the floors are eroding. They once had an onsite body shop that's now kind of a dry storage area for buildings and grounds, but there's some leaking areas that we saw that were a little bit concerning. So to say that that building needs some improvements is probably an understatement. We did get to see the office spaces, and I had previously heard about the training room or staff room that doesn't have AC or maybe AC that doesn't work very often. Sounds like the temperatures have been an ongoing issue. And lastly, the entrance road, we talked about that. Anyone who's driven into the middle school or gone to the soccer fields or the back track knows the repair work that needs to be done to that road. Sounds like it's supposed to next summer. Is that correct, Ray? But that they're going to do some work a little bit to kind of help it get through another year. And in the end, and as I read this report, you know, and this was not said on our visitation visit, but Tom really kind of pulled it all together about, you know, talking about staffing at the... up at the Transportation Department, we're always talking about bus drivers and having such a shortage. And I guess we kind of remove ourselves and we can... It's easy for us to say that, you know, we don't have drivers and speculate about all the reasons why. However, his thoughts were that, you know, the work environment is really not anything too appealing for anyone to want to work there. So just food for thought, you know, as we're talking about how to recruit drivers, you know, the appearance of that area might be part of it. I'm not entirely sure, but that was... You know, read Tom's report. It was rather actually very informative and helpful. So that was it. And I wanted to just piggyback on what Tom said, you know, as new board members, if you are... You both were on the visitation. That was the first time that I was able to be on the Visitation Committee, and it was really... Although I had been in many of the schools, most of them, I really didn't see every corner of the school and understand how the education spaces and the instructional spaces were utilized, and the great work that our buildings and grounds and facilities are looking and how they're improving and how they've improved over the years. So it was really... I would have done the committee again, honestly. It was so much, so much to see and so much great information. So thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Other committees, do we have anything, Shawn?
No.
No. Okay. Great. So we will move on then to the consent agenda, and we'll put this all together, items A through H. If I can motion for items A through H?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Second. Thanks, Tim. Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Tim. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. And on to Personnel. Personnel, I am going to group without objection, items A through G. A through G. Can I have a motion for items A through G?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Shawn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. We're going to pull out separately, item H, Professional Staff Recommendations, K-12 Team Leaders. I have a motion on item H.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Julie.
I'll second.
Second. Kristin. Thank you, Kristin. Okay. Discussion?
Under full disclosure, this is my wife and is a direct benefit to my household, and I'm most comfortable to recuse myself from discussion and vote.
Thank you, Tim. And normally, we wouldn't discuss Personnel, but it was the idea of vote, the vote itself. So thank you very, very much. So any more discussion? I think we're all good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. And then the rest of Personnel, I through T, items I through T. Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Tim, thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Julie. I through T. Any discussion there? Okay. See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries, seven oh. Now, moving on to Finance. We have three items there. Agreement with Oswego Health, the agreement with City BOC's Varnum Services for 2025-2026, and City Cooperative Purchasing Resolution, Specialty Cooperative, and Cafeteria Supplies. Can I get a motion for A through C?
I'll move.
Thank you, Kristin.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. So now on to items from the board. Do we have any items?
I have a few things. One, I just wanted to ask out if we are going to do reassignment of Board of Ed representatives for each school building. So if we could get that, maybe we could have an email thread again for us to choose our rankings like we did before. rankings like we did before.
Right, for liaisons per school.
Liaisons, yeah, so this is like each one of us will be assigned two buildings, and we would be kind of show up at their events and support them and just kind of have a board presence. So that would be awesome if we could, we could get that going again. I was fortunate to be a liaison for Kingsford Park and the middle school this year, and the middle school moving up ceremony was beautifully done. I wanted to commend Mrs. Godkin for, I think it was her first moving up ceremony, though it went really well. Beautiful day, and it was really very heartwarming, as I've been to them before, but it's just heartwarming to see kids really excited about going on to the high school. So that was a really beautiful thing. And I did also was able to attend the moving up ceremony for Kingsford Park, which also was, again, same excitement, kids going to the middle school. It's just really great to see kids excited about their school. And more than ever, having already had three children go through our district, the Buck pride and the school spirit is, in my opinion, at an all-time high. The Buck blue attire is far more than I've ever seen it. So I just wanted to say kudos to all of the leadership in us, in our district for really building upon that school spirit. I think it's, it's across the board, clubs, athletic teams, teachers, leaders, all of them, so. I think that's it. Oh, one more thing. I did want to ask about emails on the websites. There's been lots of chatter about how do I email a board member, how do I email the principal, how do, like, it's wild how families and parents can't find a way to, sometimes they don't need to call, they just want to send them an email. It's just so hard.
I mean, that was one of the reasons we did with the individual photos this time, so we can, when we go and mount them, if we can, there was a technical issue, we've talked to Jamie to make sure, sure we're good as far as security goes, that was the reason they were removed in the past. But we will post the individual picture with your term and with your email underneath it, if we can get that done. And then it's easily accessible, everyone knows, right there.
So, so just so you people understand why that happened, so that's a security reason. So we removed all email addresses because there are players in the world who are farming for email addresses so that they can send out as much phishing or spam as possible. So a lot of schools just started pulling those off. I did talk to Jamie, because I do believe at the very minimum that our community should have easy access to me and to you. Right? Parents have easy access to all staff through ParentSquare. So the focus has really been on using ParentSquare for all communication. Outside of that, community has a right to have questions, concerns, or communicate directly with me and you. And so I've asked Jamie over the summer for us to make some adjustments so that my email is readily available more, a little bit more easy, so you don't have to go through Diane to ultimately get to me. But then for all of you, you to have your email addresses as well. So that's our plan this summer, is to make that adjustment, just to, again, open up communication for the larger community. But for families in particular, we should constantly focus them back towards ParentSquare, because ParentSquare is a very easy tool that they can communicate with any and all staff members through ParentSquare.
And the other thing, I, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question. Can they get even teachers who aren't their student's teacher? Or the, because for whatever reason, I can't get the principal, it has, it lists your child's teachers and only those teachers in ParentSquare, correct?
So I'll have to double check. I am not an expert in ParentSquare, but I can tell you right now, parents have contacted me through ParentSquare. So I think at the very least, what I'll do is, is I'll talk with Jamie a little bit more about, okay, what are the limits? And then more importantly, if there is a little bit more flexibility, make sure there's very clear documentation to all families as to how to best utilize the product so that they can connect with the people that they feel they need to connect with.
Tom?
Sean? Yes. But the individual photos, and I know that you guys mentioned terms and everything like that, but once we sort out the committee, maybe we should have our committees listed under that, so if someone was like, hey, I have a question on this, then they could copy, they could send it to the three people that are serving on facilities or anything like that. So maybe that'll help them with some more direction if we have that listed. And I don't think it would hurt, once we establish the building liaisons, that like, yeah, we're aligned with Mineta or we're aligned with Kingsford. So not, not to put too much, you know, mess up there, but yeah.
Right. Great. Good idea. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on Julie. I was also at the eighth grade moving up ceremony. It was very well attended. When I first pulled in, you know, the stadium is a big place, and I was a little, little like, wow, there's not a lot of people up in the stands, but before it started, it was, like, it was like a really well-packed sporting event. It was really cool, and it was really great to see, one, the kids so excited about moving up to the high school, two, I enjoyed, you know, the kids are dressed up and seeing each kid show their personality. It was really, it was really great, you know, you, there was, there was a romance, the way the kids presented themselves, and I just love that they felt free to be themselves, and it was really great. And Amy Godkin did a great job for her first time around. I also had the pleasure of being a part of the graduation ceremony at the high school, which I absolutely love doing, I'm thrilled to be there. I want to congratulate the students who gave speeches. It's not easy, there were a lot of people in that audience, even kids who feel comfortable standing up in a class and talking, that's a whole different animal to talk in front of, you know, a thousand-plus people. And as someone who speaks in public for a living, I know it's not easy, and they did a great job, each and every one of them, I was so proud of them, and how well they did. And congratulations to all of our graduates, just like the eighth grade moving up ceremony, the individuality in what they do to their graduation caps is awesome, I loved watching that, especially from where I was sitting, after they got their diploma and walked down, I could see their hat as each of them walked down, and see what each of them did, it was really cool to see their creativity come alive. And there were some families in that audience who were so proud of their graduates. I'll tell you, some kids got a roaring round of applause, it was, it was cool. So I'd encourage anybody on the board to participate in that next year, if given the opportunity and you're in town, because it's a lot of fun.
Anyone else? I just wanted to add a couple of things. The middle school graduation, I did not attend it, I wasn't able to, but people mentioned to me how well it was done, and how much pride they had in the community and in, in the school to see it and to attend it, so they were very, very proud. And I just wanted to give a shout out, I don't know who moved the covered benches with the Oswego logo on them to the other end. I don't know if it was intentional or not, but it's wonderful branding, and it looks really nice when you come up that way. Yeah, it's great. So keep it up. And I just wanted to be able to give one little shout out, if you saw it in curriculum this week, the little notice that Amanda had sent out for the Time Capsule District, citywide writing contest that was, that they had for grades three through eight across the district, and 380 submissions were received. So when you think of that, out of grades three through eight, that we had 380 kids participate, it was wonderful. And I just wanted to give a little, a little shout out to the winners. Grade three, Kaya Leonard; grade four, Tabitha Sparassino; grade five, Braden Alexander; grade six, Sidi Modi; grade seven, Alexia Prosser; and grade eight, Gracelyn Erickson. Great job for everyone who, who entered into that, it was wonderful. And I have just a couple of things for the new board members as well, just to offer information with NISP, so, which is New York State School Boards Association, where you may get your, the training coming up. They're offering a different program called Accelerate to help you get up to speed a little bit quicker. It's online, you can go to their website, I can give you the links, you can go there to help accelerate the board process. And they're also doing one-on-one virtual half-hours with new board members, so it's something you could take advantage of as well. And for the rest of us, there is a conference in Albany on the 31st of July and the 1st and 2nd of August. Number of topics there, it's a leadership conference, but anyone can attend, and it's a, I've gone the last two years, and it's a great opportunity to meet with other districts, see what's going on in their districts, how they're solving problems, the same ones that we have, but to see them from another vantage point is very beneficial. So I will be going and tending, and if anyone else wants to go, it's an opportunity for that. So, anything else? All right. So executive session, there is a need for executive session, and the need for executive session will be for contract negotiations. So may I get a motion for, to move to executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Can I second? Thank you, Julie.
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Great. Thank you very much, we appreciate it, thanks for coming out, and congratulations again, Tim and Jen. Oh, I-